This conference will now be recorded.
Roll call.
Commissioner Eastman.
Here.
Commissioner Ganger.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Wells.
Here.
Here. All those wishing to participate in the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here to work towards a common goal, we ask for your presence to guide and direct our decisions. We know your will is good for all members of our community. We also pray for our police, our fire department workers, city workers, and hospital workers for their safety in the work they do. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There's not.
Saying none, I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move second.
Motion is made and seconded for the approval of the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five oh. Next up, recognition of visitors, Chief Burr.
Congratulations, Chief Burr.
Yeah, congrats.
Congratulations.
I do, I do.
That's quite an honor.
Like somewhere.
You graduated from somewhere.
Yeah, it really was a great program, and I learned a tremendous amount there. But good evening. Today, I get the honor of introducing a couple new police officers to the commission, which is always a great day to be able to do that. And I will have Officer Spires and Hettinbock. So I don't have to stand up here by myself. Officer Otis Spires is a 2012 graduate of the Arkans City High School. After high school, he served in the U.S. Army from 2012 to 2016. Officer Spires has most recently been employed by the Kansas Department of Corrections. One thing, if you've noticed, when we do swearing ins and introductions, I like to share just a little tidbit from the hiring process. So when I interviewed Officer Spires, when asked what it would mean to him to be a police officer here, Officer Spires told me that he came to Ark City when he was six years old. He added that there are good folks here in this community. Officer Spires told me that he wants to go out and serve and go out there with the intent of just improving their day.
Oh, that's so sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Me too.
No.
Officer Helen Hettinbock is a 2019 graduate of the Arkans City High School. In high school, Officer Hettinbock was involved in Students Against Deadly Decisions, or SAD, and helped with our annual Dare Camp. In 2019, he was also one of two students honored by the American Legion for Citizenship. Officer Hettinbock has worked as a lifeguard at both the Ark City Rec Center and Seven Clans Casino. He also recently was employed at Sherwin-Williams. Officer Hettinbock served as a Big Brother with the Kansas Big Brothers Big Sisters program for the last two years. When asked what he thinks is one of the most critical attributes a police officer must be to have to be successful today, Officer Hettinbock responded, "Being personable." He added, "The ability to talk with the community and the ability to de-escalate situations with the use of words is very important." I'm very pleased to have both Officer Spires and Officer Hettinbock join our police department family. At this time, I would ask the city clerk to administer the oath of honor to both officers.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Oh, my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
Hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Kansas.
And of the state of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Congratulations. I appreciate it.
Congrats, guys. Appreciate it.
Well, there goes half the group.
How long's the class?
It goes a bunch.
How long's the class?
Uh, twelve, twelve weeks, I think, or was.
Twelve?
It might be sixteen now.
It might be sixteen now.
It's a long time.
Yeah, like a long time.
Do we have any comments from the audience not on the agenda? Saying none, move on to the consent agenda.
I say move, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
I have one question.
Yes.
What is the renewal cereal beverage?
It happens every year, we have to renew for the different beverages.
Just, yeah, okay. Yeah, I'll skip over it. All right, no questions.
The Casey Store and Dylan's and all that stuff, it's one deal I do every, once a year.
Any further questions?
No.
Saying a motion has been made and seconded, I believe, or seconded correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
All those in favor to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries five oh. Next up, old business. Hold a public hearing regarding the proposed 2021 amended budget. I will make a motion that we open a public hearing with regards to the proposed 2021 amended budget. Public, all those in favor to open a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Any comments from the public or anyone? Saying none, I will make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Fine, second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we will need to consider the first reading of an ordinance amending specified funds in the budget for the city of Arkans City for the year beginning January 1, 2021. Any questions, any discussions?
Trying to think of a good question for Jennifer.
You want a question for Jennifer? Nothing's changed since our last conversation on this, right?
I'm just trying to hold it up.
I move, we approve the ordinance amending specified funds in the budget for the city of Arkans City for the year beginning January 1, 2021.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all the, we did this, the roll call vote, yes.
Commissioner Eastman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ganger.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
Commissioner Wells.
Yes. Motion passes five oh.
One question on our sales tax for our healthcare, you know, we're ahead of schedule, like you said the other day, about a year and a half or almost, not quite two years, right? That's, that's good news.
We hope it stays that way too, don't we?
It will.
Next up, we'll move on to new business.
So we're, we ended the, first year agreement with him on November 3rd, and he's been pretty active in getting together all the market data and getting it out and visiting with different retailers out there. So there's, there's some, there's some things kind of, some things in initial talks, and there's some things getting ready to be announced. So it's, I think for year one, it's gone pretty well.
Well, we talked about, he's, he even mentioned that it's almost a three-year project, because it takes, the first year, it takes, you know, you gather all the information that he gathers and stuff so he can send out to all these different companies and stuff that's, you know, looking to be able to build or whatever they want to do in this area. And we do have one coming in, we can't announce yet, and possibly another one. So, you know, I think it, I think he's, I think some things could happen, because he's got a lot, he's got a big trial line set and a lot of hooks baited, so we'll just have to see how it develops. You know, like the analogy.
Better come in with a big blue cat.
Yeah, there you go.
I'd like to authorize the city of Arkans City to renew the contract agreement with Retail Attractions Economic Development Consulting Services for an amount not to exceed $48,000.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor of authorizing the contract agreement with Retail Attractions LLC, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five oh. Next up.
I want to say I have a conflict of interest, and I think I probably need to step out while you guys discuss this, because I mentioned that in our workstation last Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd just like to say that I'd like to table this.
So it's always for Jada. Now we're not talking, all right. Would you like to table it?
Yes.
I'd second that.
Would you like me to give the history of the requirements?
Sure.
I would.
Well.
Go ahead.
Okay, October 11th, we received an email from Dr. Robert Horr. He's the Kansas Historical Society Sir of Archaeology. And in the email, a little over a week ago, we discussed the potential for archaeological deposits at the proposed site and how the Kansas Antiquities Commission asked. I've since learned that some recent archaeological investigations have taken place in the proposed work site, and that archaeological deposits are present, and requested and received a brief report regarding the work. From the report, it is clear that there is a potential for significant archaeological resources within the proposed project area. It is also, it is also likely that they, there are buried archaeological deposits. 1993 archaeological survey by Marlon Ollie of Kansas State Historical Society did not find archaeological materials there. However, since 2018, Dr. Blakesley Crystal Dozier from WSU and Meredith Mahoney from Cali County Community College have conducted archaeological surveys of the ground surface near the project area and located numerous artifacts in and near the proposed project area. It goes on to state, through the survey of the entire project area, survey that involves subsurface testing likely will reveal more archaeological material. Mandel in Ollie in Mandel states, "There is a potential for buried late prehistoric deposits in the lower Walnut River floodplain of Arkans City. Finally, human remains were recovered from adjacent site, which I believe was by the traffic. Given that information, it is my opinion that an archaeological survey needs to be conducted with the entire project area to be affected by the proposed project. The city needs to engage a qualified archaeological consultant. The consultant will need to apply for and receive a Kansas Antiquities Commission permit to do the work, and will need to report the results of their survey to me to share with the commission members. Subsurface methods such as the shovel or auger testing will need to be used. Institutions that are commission members do not need to apply for a permit. A list of qualified consultants that need, that have worked in Kansas can be found here." And they provided me a list. I went out, oh, so I developed a request proposal and had Dr. Horr review it. I sent it out, requesting proposals, sent it out to eight different certified archaeologists. We had the proposal opening, we didn't get any. So I went back to Dr. Horr and asked for his recommendations. He recommended I go to WSU. I did not go to them initially, because they're the ones basically requiring the report. They entered, submitted a scope work and servicing, and that's what you have in front of you.
Thank you very much.
That's where you are. So if you don't have Wichita State to do the work, what are the options?
I asked Dr. Horr that, he said that if they go ahead and proceed with construction and find something, then all work stops, contractors on hold, and then they'll need to do the certain.
Even if they did the survey and found it okay, then they would have construction started, and they found something, that would hold it.
I do not know, but I would assume that would be correct. It's an assumption.
So if they go in and find something, then they, they, do they want to leave them the artifacts laid, or do they want to? Get them?
That would be up to the tribe, the tribe, I believe, depending on what it is. I think that's right, I think they, you'd have to, if it's just artifacts, it wouldn't probably be a big deal. But if there was human remains, I think that's when the tribe, and I don't know this for a fact, but I think that's the most, the most serious, not only say serious, but probably the biggest find would be human remains, as in from a burial site.
And they would like to leave it there.
Well, that would be up to the, I think, the tribe.
Big law and small print, chapter 74 of the state board's antiquity commission states, "Artifacts and materials recovered to be committed to historical society, when artifacts and other materials recovered from such scientific investigations, if and when they are not needed, are no longer desired or retention by the original investigating agency, shall be submitted to the state Historical Society for preservation if the society so desires."
Once they do the survey, can they hold up the construction after they're done with it again? For, say, they found something, but they didn't have time, or can, we give them a time limit?
I don't know. I think further discussion are probably better to have right now in this. We're gonna approve it.
There are penalties for violation of the act. Any person, institution, or corporation violating any provisions of this act shall be guilty of misdemeanor, and upon conviction shall be punished by a fine not exceeding $500 of imprisonment, not to exceed six months of both. All materials collected from the site by a convicted offender shall be delivered to the Kansas State Historical Society. It looks like there's a lot of legality to this.
Glad to see Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So, so if they find something, they can hold it up as long as they want to? All right, please.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess. We have.
I think we should.
City has no recourse then? Right?
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's.
Okay. All right.
I still move the table.
Second.
Motion has been made to move or to table this for further discussion. Are there any more, is there any more discussion to be had amongst us?
How long do you want to table it?
I think at least two weeks, I'd say, let's see, we're out of the next workshop, work session, and go from there, is what I would do.
Did you want me to do something in the meantime?
I'll give it to you tomorrow.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor wishing to table this for further discussion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries four oh, we'll go get Commissioner Warren.
Reservations.
Find him another spot.
Before we get into the, what else, that was, before we get into the staff reports, had someone come in later, I'd like to address the commission, for three minutes, I was told, so.
Yeah, thank you, sorry I'm late. There's been something that's been brewing in my mind for a long time, and I know two of you are leaving, but three of them are, our commissioners are here. But my point is, is that there's a lack of oversight in the city. I say that is, I go to a lot of the meetings, whether it's the Unification Board that I'm on, or the ADA Board, or the safety, traffic safety meetings. Everybody has their little piece of the pie, and they are very interested in their little piece of the pie, and they do a good job of presenting it and looking out for it. I had the opportunity to pass out surveys and talk to residents for two days during Arkalala. And I had a chance to talk to a lot of people on these boards. These are people that have families, they have jobs. They don't have any ability to see the big picture of things in the town. And the citizens and the people on the board, there's really no difference. They really don't know what's going on. They don't know what you know, and they don't know what I know, because I go to your meetings, okay? They have no idea. And yeah, I take a lot of heat at, at meetings, because I'm presenting the facts, and the facts are not all that pleasant to present, not everybody wants to hear it. Things like splash pads, they don't want to hear the reality of it. The, the pool commission is going just off, off the charts. They're talking about bonds, they're talking about a splash pad at the, at the pool. It's just, it's racing out of control.
Well, I don't think, firstly, I don't think that is even, I'm close to being discussed. And we got a pool that needs to be addressed, where we're at as a commission.
Big, big ideas, and he's a great guy, a lot of energy. But there needs to be some kind of logical presentation that, hey, we're going in the wrong direction. So it's really given me a clear insight as to why mistakes happen, like the way that the two-way stops have been arranged. No one knows, no one knows about the law that is controlling the decisions to put these stop signs up. No one knows about it, and so it's not their fault. I can't get angry at any buddy in particular, but I'm talking to you because you guys are the elected officials. So I think the city needs to hold you guys to higher standards. And you guys need to be at these meetings to present the overall picture and kind of make things more realistic. There's a lot of big dreams, people have been promised a lot of things in the city. And you just don't have the means to do everything, at least not all at once. So I would really encourage you to do what I've been doing and try to give people the big picture, because it's really, I think, decisions are being made just out of ignorance. And it's not that they're bad people, and it's not that they're not smart, it's just they don't have access to the information.
Comments?
Well, I have a comment, you know, some of these committees, you know, we have our local people on those, it gives input back to us, you know, to make a decision. And for us to go on these, a lot of these, and I'm just talking out loud, just myself only, that to me, for me to go on those committees and start giving, dictating what these people need to do and not do, I don't think it's right either, you know, because they need to have input in this thing too. It comes back to us, you know, and so forth. So I see where you're coming from, but I think it'd be a little conflict of interest for me to go on one of those committees and say, well, you guys aren't doing it right, you know, here's what needs to be done. To me, I don't think that's right either. So it's a fine line, you know, hey, you know, you see, see what I'm saying?
It is a fine line, and yeah, I'm not saying you should go there and dictate, but there's a city commissioner on every committee, and I think it's their job to present the overall picture, present the budget constraints. It's, it's not being done.
Oh, I, I mean, I see what you're saying, but sometimes when you're looking at big picture or big ideas or big plans or grand things, sometimes they, they start there, but it's up to us to slowly start getting it into what's a realistic option, what could be, could not be happening. So it's hard to say, well, guys, don't drink, because nothing can happen, well, then let's not do anything. I think sometimes the dreams, ideas, and potential happen out of those things. Yes, it may not be to the scale that those individuals may have, but it may be something that we could do within our means or within our community's means. And I think that's kind of, you hate to, I guess, tell them, well, don't be doing that, that's impossible, that's impossible. And I think if you start telling them what you can and can't do, I think the participation in the committees starts saying, well, then you guys just figure it out yourself. And then it turns into, well, that's not what, so I think you gotta let the citizens in those committees dream, but it still comes down to whether we okay, I mean, we, it's like the wastewater facility. One's like a $30 million project, well, yeah, it would be nice to do, but it's not in our means, you know? I'm sure some people wanted that process, well, we just couldn't, you know? So I think, I think people are realistic, I just think overall the grand pictures are sometimes a good thing for people to lay out there, because they lay out other potential possibilities that may be more realistic out of them.
I'm not saying dictate to them, but I think we need to present the facts in these meetings. They don't know anything about splash pads, I do. Mike Bellis, Mike Bellis knows about splash pads. I know about them, because I researched them. I went and I talked to Coon Mechanical about it, they've installed them before, they've gone back to repair them. We need, we need to get a hold of things, things are rising too high within our system, and they're not being caught. And it's because lack of oversight at the beginning levels. Not dictating, but speaking realistically, these are great ideas, but they're going to take a long time.
Well, I don't, I don't know that there have been promises made from administration or from the commission that haven't gone through. But between social media and media outlets, things get on there, and then all of a sudden, it becomes, where's it at? Well, we've never figured out funding for it, we've never talked about it at a level that would take it into reality. And so I think that it's easy for things to get excited and raised up, and then they look back and say, but you didn't get us this, and you didn't get us that. That was never in the plan. You're right, people don't know, and they don't know how to get from what is said in a commission meeting and what is said in a committee meeting. And that's difficult, because you assume that the person who said that to you has knowledge or authority, and so they've made this statement, and then you leave that meeting, not you, but they leave that meeting, and they go tell somebody else, we're getting this.
Or they're talking about doing this.
Right.
Well.
And it spreads, and so we, we understand that that's what happens, and we have representatives at those meetings, not every single meeting, every single time, but we do have representatives at those meetings.
I'm not funny.
You're right, we need to be better at communicating.
And it's hard as a commission, when you go to those, you're going to that as kind of from your own standpoint, in your own.
Well, you have, you usually have an agenda when you go, if you have a reason why you're going to it, you usually have a kind of an agenda, you know, what you want to. you usually have a kind of an agenda, you know, what you want to see done, you know, type thing. And that's what, you know, you want to keep everything open, you want to see, instead of having agendas, you want to have your mind open up for, to see a bigger picture, you know, see a bigger vision, what's going on. And a lot of these, a lot of times it's just a short-term vision, you know? You have agenda, and this is what you want to try to do, and that you try to go for that. That's not really the right way of doing it, you know? I mean, you got, you know, you got to look at the bigger picture.
I look at it when I'm on those.
No, just general, just, yeah.
When I look at those, I go in there, if I'm on the committee, I'm going to listen in with thought here or there, and then I will take what's being discussed back to the commission. Because what I say, I may be one, I may be the one person who feels that way. The other people may feel different. Well, you said that, well, I did, but I didn't know how these others, so it's hard. You're just kind of relaying the information, expressing this is a committee's desires, or this is what's on the committee's mind, or here's what's been happening at these committee meetings. And then see what happens, whether it happens up here, happens within the.
Actually, we have to, we have to operate right in this room right here. Because we can't have three commissioners at one meeting without having an agenda type thing, because it's against the law. You know, so one person can come, and just like when we have workstations, if we bring it up, we can talk about it among all five members, because we're right here, it's legal to do that. But we, three of us can't, you know, can't go to one meeting by itself, type things. So we got to be careful how we, you know.
I know all that.
Okay.
And I'm saying that you guys are commissioners for the city. And you know facts that they don't know. And I think that it's hurting the city by them not knowing facts. And I'm not pointing the finger at anyone. I think it's a cultural problem in our city that goes way back. That there just has not been a level of honesty and, and leadership from, from the top and people in a lot of directions. And I hate to keep talking about the traffic thing, but that's how these two-way stops got pushed through the system. Nobody knew why, no one's looking at the big picture of the city. And this traffic master plan that we're paying $25,000 is going nowhere. We, we have, we, as a city, and you guys are the leaders of the city, we need to decide what we're going to do in every area of the city, whether it's traffic or the activities, the pool. I know you guys, guys have 100 different things on your plate. But there's an element that's missing at these meetings. I've been going to these meetings for over a year to actually find what these problems are. And we need more direction from the top. We need more help. Give us the facts, give us the information.
We can give all the facts in the world to the committees. But we can't give a decision at the committee meetings.
No, not.
And we can't speak on behalf of the, all we can do is say, hey, here's what. May or may not, but you can go to the commission, we can try to figure it out. I mean, the idea is start on the committees, and they come here, that's the goal of the committees. Their, their committees lay out what they see from a community standpoint, whatever committee they may stand on, or whatever committee they may be a part of. It's what they see, and that's good for us to see, because none of, not a lot, not a lot of people come to the commission meetings, not a lot of people come to work sessions. So sometimes those committee meetings, it's nice to hear from the public, and it gives those entities a chance to express what the concerns or ideas and goals are. And all we can do, we can present facts all day.
It's just, it's just like here tonight, we're having a city meeting right now. We ought to have this room packed with people, concerned people in here, just, you know, just to hear what's going on. This, because this is where it starts right here, where we're doing all this stuff, going through our budgets and all that stuff. We need to have more input from the people, we don't get it. It's just like our last election. We have 13,000 people, only 800 people voted. I mean, you know, that's not very good, you know? So it's got to go back to the people, you know, they got to, you want them, you try to get them involved. That's what we're trying to do, is get them involved, you know, this thing.
Yeah, but it's not going to change anytime in the near future. But I don't know, I don't know what to say, you guys, you guys are resisting this, but.
No, what am I resisting? I just don't know if, I don't know for in total agreement. I know newly elected Commissioner, if you want to speak, do you? Real fast, not the Harrison and staff here, but yes, go ahead.
Mr. Jennings, I'll say this right now. I understand that the petition has shared your responses. Actually, I think it's just really a comprehension and understanding thing. But we, we need to differentiate, some boards are statutory. And must be, must exist and must function as a part of the subset of the governing body. Some boards are actively labeled advisory boards. And the intent of them is to intentionally get citizen input. That's why we try to diversify those boards, to get participation. But those are, these are, if I'm going to borrow that from President Bush, these are the deciders. So all decisions in budgetary matters go here and are exclusive to this body. Those boards are intentional ways to get information and input about what the citizens desire. So they simply make recommendations, and somewhere down the line, someone has gotten the impression that those boards that are not statutory are making decisions that should be acted on by the commission. It is just, this is a body of citizens. These are the things that we think are priorities and best to be taken into consideration by this board of deciders, other than the statutory boards. For example, you must have a planning commission. Okay, that's a statutory. Unification is an advisory board. Okay? The senior center is an advisory board. And the, 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 intentional ways to get input, that's why they look for new faces all the time. To continue to get structured and, and designed ways that the citizens communicate. And then you rely on staff to effectively carry that back here. But you can't have pockets of commission, of decision-making all over the city. These are the deciders. And they need to get all that input, and take it seriously, and let it influence the way they lead and guide. But they can need to clarify between what are statutory boards and what are advisory boards. And I think maybe that's an educational piece that needs to happen, which people sort of, on this board. We're wanting recommendations, but we're not obligated to act on those. Because you've got to be fiscal, they have to be fiscally accountable. So these are the, are the deciders, you guys are the deciders. And the others are the influences of decisions, sorry.
Well said, that's what I was trying to say, but I couldn't say it.
And, and I'd like to say something. The city hires people. Police chief, Mike is code enforcement. Mike is, what, what are you, Mike?
Everything.
Something, you're something, but you do it all.
He's retired, he's leaving. Yeah.
We expect the city manager to hire people that can come make recommendations for what the city can and other things that goes with that. And then they tell us what the city can do. And we try, I mean, I try to make that work between what the city can do and what the citizen wants. That's, that's tough, it's real tough. Because sometimes we decide to do something, and people say, well, why'd they do that? But it comes down to, to money and what's viable and what's illegal.
I feel like we're speaking a different language here. Okay. Chief Burr has been very supportive. Captain Jim Holloway's been very supportive. Mike Crandall has been very supportive also. Mike Bellis, Josh White is doing a great job. These guys know what they're doing, they know what they're talking about, but it's not enough. No one's listening, no one's listening.
How can you make somebody listen if we have all these people that are experts?
And nobody's listening to the experts, is what I'm saying.
How are we, how are we?
But I think, I think no matter what's, I mean, first of all, I don't know if we're going to agree with everything you're saying. I, right, right, whether it's right or wrong, obviously, but I think, I don't think you're going to get, I think this goes to just the greater good of a community. I don't think everyone's going to agree with how I or the commission may vote, or how we see certain items. No matter how loud they yell, or how loud we yell, sometimes you just don't agree to, you agree to disagree. And hopefully it's civil and understood, and saying, this is what we're doing, these are the reasons we're doing it. And if they're still upset, well, they didn't listen to me, well, maybe not on that idea or that agenda. It's not that we don't care or respect that decision or that your idea. It's just, this is how we as a commission felt. I think, I think things are getting, I think we're getting misconstrued on what we're trying to both say here. And so, and so I think, I don't think we're going to get anything solved talking anymore on this. But I see agreements, people aren't always going to agree with what's said or not said, whether it's at the city commission, planning commission, traffic safety, beautification, whatever the boards may be. There's always going to have different ideas, different opinions, different thoughts. And then how it gets relayed up and how we as a commission vote may not be how it was discussed here. But it's our job as a commissioner on those boards to say, I think this is more what they're wanting. And then if it doesn't go the way, then that commissioner can go back to the board and say, here's why we're doing what we're doing. I think that's just presenting the facts.
I agree with everything you guys are saying, I'm not. What I'm saying is that I would like to see more input from the commissioners at these other meetings. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
I agree with everything.
Thank you, Harrison, yeah, thanks. Well, we got, we're got.
Any more? Yeah, reports.
On December 9th, so the state has done a statewide housing study. And they've, they've got that finished up, and they're going around the different parts of the state, giving the results of that. So on Thursday, December 9th, several staff members are going to go over to Derby and, and listen to the results of the statewide housing study. Riza Cali Steering Committee meeting is at 10:00 AM on Tuesday, the 14th, at the county courthouse. Next legislative, county legislative committee meeting is Tuesday, December 14th, at the area chamber, Winfield Area Chamber of Commerce. And then we have Summit Nights downtown from 5:00 to 8:00 on December 16th. And the Traffic Safety Committee meeting will be, meet to discuss the multimodal transportation master plan at 10:00 AM on Friday, December 17th. Having another commission work session on December 17th in my office. And then you're probably aware that Carrie Flutie has accepted a position with the state. So I'm going to meet with her this week. And then I know Taggart and Lucas and I are going to get together, talk about steps forward. And, and so anyway, this, we'll be working on that. And obviously, we'll need to talk as a group too, just at some point, to make sure that the current arrangement is, is working and what we want, if we want to see anything different as, as Art City, so.
Who's, with her leaving, who's going to, who's going to, how are they going to pick a new person?
That's the things that have to be talked about.
Okay, so that's what you guys will be talking about?
Yeah.
It should be probably left, be left up with the cities and stuff, you know, to have bigger.
Well, we have the interlocal agreements, I believe, on that. So those are, you know, so like I say, those are things that we need to talk about. And then we'll need to get some input from, from the commissioners on, you know, our, is what's been going on in the past. We'll continue to see, or there are different things that we want to see. So just kind of keep that in mind. That's all I have. Andrew had some updates on grants.
Something we started doing a couple of years ago, I just thought it's always good to take a picture of where we're at at the end of the year and how well we did. We're measuring that in the budget book now as well on grants. But it was kind of difficult this year, because I usually break this out by when the funds actually hit the city account. But some of these projects have been delayed, and COVID has messed things up. So a lot of the stuff may not get built till next year. But I wanted to kind of combine 20 and 21 as best I could. So I know that chart in your packet's a little hard to read. But all told, when you add up all this, and this is basically through staff effort over the last year and a half, taking advantage of new opportunities such as ARPA and the CARES Act, we were able to bring in $3.372 million total in grant funding, which I think is a high number from my time here. And so again, I don't think we get a lot of the credit for that, because the ARPA money is something you don't ever count on, that just kind of came down from the heavens for us. But there'll be another payment in that installment date, under the $5,000 next year. And then maybe another residual payment, which is that $5,265. That's basically leftover money that a city's didn't claim, and it goes back into a pool, and it's divvied back out. Some of these grants are not yet awarded, we don't know the status of the yellow ones. Only, I made one mistake, the third yellow one there has. So that's. So we're hoping to hear on a couple of grants. And then a couple of these are really not recent grants, the $840,000 for transportation alternatives. We actually received that several years ago. It's just taken us four years to get that project designed. Currently scheduled. So hopefully we'll finally get to build that trail. So I would have included it though, just because it hasn't been expended. Just kind of wanted you guys to see what we've been working on. And I hope we can match this level of productivity and grant running.
When's your 15th street bridge supposed to start?
It's going to be, uh, construction by December 1st, 2022.
Okay, so it's been, it's been put off a year.
Not necessarily, the design work, they just finished it up. The city attorney's working on, we need to acquire some permanent ride along.
Okay.
And then relocate the utility. So once those are done, then we can.
But the scope of the work, what, something about the scope of the work, the way it was set up, it's going to be a little bit cheaper than what we thought?
Yeah, the method they're using, construction, we got that, I think it was $338,000 compared to almost $450,000 or $500,000. Like it's pre-fab, or?
Yeah, so they're, they're pre-made concrete slabs, I gather, yeah, that they, that they bring and put in place, so it goes a lot quicker. And it, it, then, uh, bridge is cast on site.
And they're able to use the top of the bridge as the surface.
I think it'd be.
The top of it, the lid will serve as the base and the surface of it. The piece re's concrete already, so.
If you're familiar with like a pre-stressed concrete construction building, it's kind of like those, the roofing.
Of course, any cost reduction on that project is advantageous, because it's only up to $150,000 in the KDOT funds.
No, and it's a bill of health, also, we already got that, right?
Yeah, so we have actually received one payment, there's two or three more that we should be receiving.
Total $125,000?
Over the course of four years, yes. That program's been a nightmare in terms of their portal. Federal government launched a new portal last October, and it's literally a year later, and we're still working on dealing with bugs and that issue. So I know Chief Burr's having some trouble getting some reports. And as soon as we can clean that up, we should be getting, I don't know, two payments in on that. But it's an active program right now. I would just tell you, there's at least three new grant opportunities this year that I didn't even know existed before this year that we've applied for. I hope we can continue to find more. Like you said, it's hard to meet all the wants and needs of the community, but the more we can find these sources of funding, and thankfully, it seems like maybe some funding streams are opening up that haven't been present in the past, the more that we can hopefully deliver on some of those projects. We will continue to challenge ourselves to look for all those.
One other question, do you feel it's been passed by Congress, you know, on transportation? I mean, the, is, have you looked at, have they sent anything out, what we could apply for?
I did put in your packet, I think it was a four or five page summary document. That came from the White House, that's an estimate of what the impact would be in Kansas, but you know, some of that's political. Yeah, they were saying on the lead call that there might be some stuff coming out here soon. And I think the state, from what I gather, the state's going to keep the recovery office going and kind of use that as its agent to sort of dissect and disseminate. But that, that bill is massive.
We might be able to get some money in it for our wastewater plant, because it has, you know.
Yeah, it's that, so is what I, what I understood, they, I was at the city managers conferences last week, and they talked about some of this. And money for water wastewater is probably going to go into the revolving loan funds. And they'll, they'll do probably a combination of loans, loans like normal, and then also some forgiveness, maybe up to 49% loan forgiveness.
That'd be wonderful, we get that.
So there's some things like that, you know, that are going, and it may, that stuff may go on.
It's kind of like that one loan, that loan we get, where we get forgiven, like a million dollars, once we apply it, so.
Yeah, so I mean, whether those things, those timings line up with our project or not, I don't know. But it's not like transportation dollars will go into KDOT for them to, to be. But it's not like transportation dollars will go into K dot for them to beef up their programs and, and so.
And that might happen to see that bypass back around, you know, what we're talking about.
It should be funny any day on the I pipeline.
On the what?
The I pipeline, they'll do an update on what the new projects, development pipeline are. I think we're supposed to be ready for something, so.
Thank you, Andrew, thanks for all you do. Any more from you guys? Motion made adjourned, I'll second. Say aye. Aye. All those opposed. I'm going to light that one, you leave.